All right. Good evening, everybody. My favorite words of every other Thursday night, noting the hour and the presence of a quorum. I call the Acton-Boxborough Regional School Committee to order. Members of the public who wish to watch our meeting may do so either here in person or on ACTON TV's YouTube channel, and that link is found at the top of our agenda. It is the same link every time. This meeting is being recorded for those in the room, and it will be posted on ACTON TV's website at actontv.org. And thank you to ACTON TV for recording us this evening. Welcome. I just do want to point out that it's wonderful to have all of our committee members here this evening. I'm so happy to see all 11 of you around the table. Leela's here, she'll be right back in. But great to have you all here. We've got a relatively packed agenda this evening, and I have made a commitment for us to have as efficient as possible meetings. So with that, I'm going to take us right into public participation. And so per our policy, B-E-D-H, members of the public are invited to speak for up to three minutes, and we'll reserve a maximum of 20 minutes for public participation. Public participation only happens at this time in the meeting. So if you have comments regarding any of the items on our agenda, or anything that's not on our agenda, now is the time to come up and speak. And as a reminder, speakers must be recognized by the chair before speaking. And finally, the committee does not typically respond to comments that are made during our public participation. With that, is there anybody here who wish to make a public participation comment? Someone's going to turn that on for you, don't worry.
Great, thank you. Hi, Judith Ehrenstein, three Gregory Lane in Acton. I am the coordinator of Mothers Out Front in Acton. And I have just a comment about your goals, and I'll just read it, it's easier. I had three children who went through the school, and they're all really well-launched, and they had a great education. And I commend this committee and the past committees for really the phenomenal education they had here. I'll add that so many times, I'm glad that my kids are not in school right now. The quality has not diminished, but I feel like what you're having to face is huge between technology, the internet, the phones, scrolling, plus COVID. It's really, I think you have a different student than you had years ago. And it's not just because of the phone, I think their brains are different, so I don't envy you all. I looked through the goals, and the Mothers Out Front team looked through the annual goals, and we're very impressed with the breadth and the importance of all that's in there, as well as we're aware of the budget shortfall. So, a brief story, one of our Mothers Out Front grandparents, grandparent, has moved to town to help her daughter, and she went into the boardwalk school with her daughter and was really impressed. She had no idea. And she said, "These kids are living the experience of the adults making a change for the climate in the school. It's transparent, you see it in the ceiling, you see it everywhere." And she felt that that lived experience was really important. And from that, I sort of took this, that we need to continue to have that lived experience for our kids in their buildings, in their curriculum, on their buses, so that they know that they don't have the power necessarily to deal with climate change, but the adults, the administrators, the district are dealing with that. I think that that's, as someone who's worked in climate now for not that many years, I can't say that I'm a dyed-in-the-wood activist, well activist, but for me, sometimes I forget that we are in this massive emergency. And I don't really forget, because, but I can't have it in the forefront, because I would be unable to function. So it's our job to remind you that this is a really important issue to deal with in the curriculum, in the psychology of these children. A quick, little...
Thirty seconds left.
Okay. UC Irvine did a study of 2,000 students in California, and 90% of them believe that climate change is happening now. And two out of three ranged from fairly concerned to concerned, and only one in five. And while one in five is very concerned. So, that's basically the message, to support the resource force in what they're asking the school committee to do, and also including school buses, which is what Mothers Out Front is trying to work on. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other people here for public participation?
Hi, my name is Nova, and I'm here tonight to bring some more discussion to the cell tower issue at our school. Thanks. I've been working on this effort for a long time, for almost a year. I had some concerns about the proposed cell tower at our school, based on what I knew about radio frequency radiation and human exposure. I did what we were taught to do in school while we are trying to understand something more. I asked questions, and I researched it extensively. After my research, I was even more convinced that there was a possibility of biological and environmental harms, and that cell towers don't belong at our school. To begin with the conversation and raise awareness at school, I started an in-person student petition at the beginning of last year, and submitted it to Peter Light and our AB school committee. As of the last committee meeting on September 5th, I had not heard back from Peter Light about the petition effort. I received an email from Peter Light a few days ago acknowledging the petition with an apology for the delayed response, and he shared that he and you, as our school committee, did not plan to take my suggestion of consulting with an independent expert on the issue of cell tower safety. Peter Light said he felt your one expert with a history of supporting cell tower placements was enough to assure safety, and that he and the school committee did not plan to consider this request. You responded no to an independent expert weighing in on cell tower safety for us. You're saying we don't need to take a look at this information and broaden our understanding of the core issues. An expert willing to speak to us for free, that served on the only formal state commission in the United States who researched the question of RF safety for one year. After so many statements of how inconclusive the evidence on RF safety was at your last meeting, don't need any more information? My question is, what kind of example is this for us as students? If we in our own school environment can't come together for dialogue, or take the time to address our complex issues at school, how can we ever expect to do in our world and learn the importance of this? I want to ask you this evening, is this really the kind of example you want to model or present to your students? An approach where those with other valid concerns are dismissed? I'm asking you to be an example of the integrity of the process that you teach. Take the time to meaningfully explore the RF safety questions from all valid perspectives, and consider the safer engineering and technical options to meet our needs. I'm asking you to schedule a presentation from Dr. Kent Chamberlain from the New Hampshire Commission at your next meeting or earliest convenience, and to not make any more decisions on the cell tower at our school until you have learned more and considered safer options. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Nova.
Good evening. My name is Marco Burkhard, and I'm a concerned AB school parent. Upon review of the public comments posted on the school committee website, it is clear that there are many misconceptions that you need to help clarify to the public. Thank you. The first, installing a cell tower will have no effect or improvement on the Wi-Fi signal at any of the school buildings. Number two, the tower co-presentation and discussion at Du Place on August 22nd at the school committee meeting made clear that the cell tower will not remedy the boardwalk campus' lack of The capacity issues that were brought up by some of the public, and also many others stated they had no issues with calling, texting on high school, middle school, or surrounding areas, can be addressed with safer and more targeted technology in a timeline that is much faster and does not exceed a year or more, as will be the case with the cell tower construction. So the AB school committee and superintendent have not supplied the public with a complete needs assessment study, or any safety communication needs you may have done, that would inform best options to address all of these communication needs. The cell tower will not address these key concerns coming from your public survey, and there should be transparency around this. So your job is to complete a needs assessment, and make this public, and ensure that you can address all of these key concerns in a safe and timely manner before even considering constructing a cell tower on our school campus. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Yes?
Can I ask help with...
Vikram, can you lower the microphone now, please? Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Jennifer Navatney. I'm speaking as concerned AB parent.
Can you check to make sure the microphone's on?
Hold on, I think you need to just speak more closely to it.
Okay, thank you. After hearing from the industry expert earlier today, Donald Hayes, it's clear that there's still many unanswered questions and inconclusiveness around a cell tower proposed for our school. At this juncture, we now need to include one of the independent experts in our inquiry, one without any current or past ties to industry, who's meaningfully explored the issue of RF safety. The next step is crucial in providing this fuller picture. It's critical we understand the many pieces of this discussion and make an educated decision, especially when there's been so much concern expressed by our school communities, our students, parents, and the public. There remains so many questions around RF harm. Dr. Kent Chamberlain is an independent expert who offered you to present this expertise as a community service to our AB school community. He offered you to present and discuss the findings of the New Hampshire Commission, the only formal state commission who has thoroughly investigated the issue of RF biological harms. There are no time constraints in us making this decision, we learned that from our last meeting. We can take the time, we can hear Dr. Chamberlain, we can hear the commission's findings. There's a clear need to ensure that we do not rush into a legally binding decision that has long-term implications and lots of liabilities for our school. We can take the time to ensure that we learn more about this issue, and hear experts from all sides. We need to. It is our formal request that the AB school committee receive a presentation from Dr. Kent Chamberlain prior to making any decisions, or taking forward any action on this issue. In addition to reporting on the New Hampshire Commission's findings, he can show us safer engineering solutions to take forward with our connection and technology needs. Consider as members of this school committee, are each of you ready to formally state on the record that radio frequency radiation emitted from a cell tower is biologically safe for our children? Not compliant as the 1996 FCC standard, but I'm asking you to state definitively that this is safe for our children. If you can't, if you can't make this statement, then you can't go forward with the cell tower. Thank you. I look forward to your response, and I will leave hard copy of the reports.
Thank you. Any other public comment this evening?
Hello, I almost missed it, I was driving back from BU where I teach, so. So, good evening, members of the school committee, Superintendent Light, and fellow community members. My name is Dr. Roger Taylor, and I'm a longtime resident of Acton-Boxborough, and fellow educator. Like many of you, I have a deep appreciation for technology. In fact, I was one of those enthusiasts, crazy enthusiasts, who stood in line at the Apple Store to get the first iPhone when it came out. It was kind of like Woodstock, it was very, very fun, in a very geeky sort of way. So I believe in innovation and the positive impact technology can have in our lives. As a supporter of free speech, free market principles, and technological advancement, it feels somewhat out of character for me to speak out against a technological proposal. However, my commitment to our community and the well-being of our children compels me to voice my concerns tonight. So let me be clear, I'm not opposed to 5G technology, or the expansion of telecommunications infrastructure when it's implemented responsibly. Placing cell towers in appropriate locations, such as remote areas far from residential neighborhoods, or schools and hospitals, can provide benefits of improved connectivity without posing potential risks to densely populated areas. My concern lies specifically with the proposal to install a tower on our school campus. I believe this action could potentially harm our students, and negatively impact the financial standing and public image of Acton-Boxborough. First, there is the legal consideration. Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 71, Section 16C specifies that regional school districts may lease land only for educational purposes. Leasing land to a private telecommunications company may not align with the statute. The Dover Sherborne Regional School Committee faced a similar situation, decided against pursuing a cell tower on their campus to avoid potential legal violations and community backlash. So moving forward with this proposal could lead to unintended consequences. One, community division. There's growing concern among parents and residents, approving the cell tower might deepen divisions within the community. Reputational risk. Acton-Boxborough has a proud reputation for prioritizing education, which is why we moved here, by the way. This decision could undermine public trust, tarnish our image. And then financial implications.
Thirty seconds.
How many seconds?
Thirty.
All right. Potential legal challenges and protests could result in costly legal fees and divert resources from educational activities. Well, the scientific community continues to study the long-term health effects of cell towers. Many parents and residents are uneasy about having such facilities near our schools. So we must ask ourselves, do the benefits of the potentially leased land truly outweigh the risks?
Thank you, Dr. Taylor. All right. Any last public comment? We've got time in our 20 minutes for about one more. Okay. Thank you all very much for your participation. We are going to move on to superintendent's update. Peter?
All right. Thank you, Adam. So, welcome, everyone. Want to just say congratulations to our high school for a moment. The high school is being recognized as a unified champion school for the 23-24 school year by Special Olympics of Massachusetts. So that is a fantastic designation to get, and I just want to give a huge shout-out to Nikki Janot and Faith Yager, who are the coordinators of that program. So it's a tremendous program. If you haven't seen it in action, I would encourage you to come by the schools while we have some of our unified sports playing. If you don't know what unified sports are, we have a Special Olympics program, but unified sports is different in that unified sports partners typically developing peers with their peers who might have disabilities, and they actually compete interscholastically together, and it is just a remarkable experience, and we're so fortunate to be recognized at the state level for having that honor. We are coming up on Hispanic Latinx Heritage Month, so, you know, we do kick off a month of making sure we're educating students about the cultural and traditions of our Hispanic and Latinx communities, so we will be sending information home about that. I had a great opportunity to be over at the Douglas Elementary School yesterday, where they celebrated their 24th Annual Walk for Peace. That, if you don't know the history of that, it actually started after 9/11, you know, kind of with, you know, input from some of our community members, and a student at the time who had been impacted by the events of 9/11. And so the Douglas Elementary School continues to celebrate that Walk for Peace every year. It's just a great event, they do some singing, they learn about, kind of, you know, the idea of everyone contributes to establishing peace, and it's something we have to work for. It's not an event about 9/11, it's an event about how do we continue to all work toward peaceful goals. So, great opportunity there. Our annual report, if you remember, we've distributed it digitally to our school community. However, we chose not to publish it in full print form, and to try to save some money. We used recycled paper already, but we will still continue to say please, hopefully. But what we're doing instead this year is we're actually sending a postcard to each household in the community with a QR code that a community member can scan and go right to the digital report. And we think that's going to be, hopefully, an efficient way of making sure that we can get the information into the hands of every community member, and also make sure people know about what's going on in the schools in a cost-effective way. Later, we'll be talking about the Elementary Budget Task Force, I'm not going to give much of an update on that. Vision of a graduate steering committee, this is something you're going to start hearing about at the next school committee meeting, but we are going to be working with the entire community in doing some visioning around the types of knowledge, skills, habits of mind that we want our students to have as they pass through our system. So actually, as I was listening to you talk about Mothers Out Front and the work that you're doing, and the idea of making sure that we bring the notion of sustainability into the minds of our students, this is exactly the kind of visioning that we want to do with the community, and really, you know, engage not only our educators, but our families and broader community members and business community in helping us create this vision of a graduate that can kind of form a guidepost for the next, you know, seven to 10 years of curricular work that we want to do in the district. So, we're excited to talk to you about that next time, and we will be coming back to I'm going to pause there, because I know we have a lot, but we certainly have other things. If you know people who would like to be either special education assistants, part-time classroom assistants, part-time office support staff, crossing guards, or extended day program, we have openings for all of those positions. So we would encourage members of the community to send people our way, and we would love to continue to become fully staffed.
Thanks, Peter. Any questions on our superintendent update? Tori?
Not a question, but a comment. Unified basketball plays home October 8th against CC. Coolest thing about going to a unified basketball game is the idea is that everybody should score, and you will see some tremendous sportsmanship, along with some tremendous competition. Highly recommend.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to the guests and presentations section of our meeting. First item up is our discussion, ongoing discussion around the proposed cell tower at the administration building. Peter, would you like to give an introduction to our guests this evening?
Sure. So, you know, thank you, Adam, and I want to thank members of the community who spoke to the cell tower proposal that we have before you. We certainly recognize that, you know, there are differing opinions on an issue that's of particular interest to the community. Just to be fully transparent, we did publish in the packet for the committee various questions that had come in, and I included not only the letter from Dr. Chamberlain, but I actually included the full report, as a link in your packet, so that you have that as well. I wanted to make sure that we're presenting the information that gets sent to us, and that is posted online. We also posted the public comment period. I know it said there were about 130 public comments, you'll notice, you know, probably many of them were blank, because people were testing the system to see how it worked, and just don't complete the comment. But we published all of that, so that you have all of the available information that came in through that survey we had put out. You know, the other, there's other information that different committee members had shared with me, and what I wanted to do was be transparent and just share that out with the whole committee. So it's not just one committee member communicating with me, it's actually information that came to me that I want to make sure we're being clear and transparent, not only you, but our community, about, so there are various links in there. One interesting one to me that I included actually came from a staff member, and that was a link to a recent study that the World Health Organization published. It was actually a September 2024 study, so it's very recent, which actually was the largest-ever study of health impacts of cellphone use and, you know, cell towers. And they actually had concluded that, you know, there certainly were differing studies. However, their conclusion was the consensus in the scientific field continued to support the current practice. So I will point to that as well, and that's not to dismiss the fact that some people may still have concerns, but I do think it's significant, because it was the largest-ever study conducted on this topic by an organization that is not tied to any one particular industry. Knowing some of the concerns that had come forward at last school committee meeting, and wanting to make sure that you had done a thorough job of vetting this, I reached out to MIT and some various sources, and we were actually able to contract with Don Hayes, who is, at this point in his career, an independent safety consultant around cellphones and cell towers, actually, really not just that, but non-ionizing forms of radiation. All radiation, we're talking about non-ionizing forms, thank you, I learned that earlier today. What's great is, you know, we're contracting with him, but Don actually came in earlier today, free of charge, and did a presentation for our students who might be interested. So we had a handful of students come up from the high school, who were able to hear, you know, more broadly about different forms of radiation, and learn about that. A couple of school committee members sat in on that presentation, so thank you, for those of you who were able to. And I'll turn it over to Don. Don is going to do a much better job of introducing himself than I would do. So I will, if we could pass this down to Don, to give him control of the slides.
And Don, there's a button on the front of that microphone that you push, and it goes red, and then you're live out on YouTube.
Okay, thank you, everybody, for having me here this evening, and giving me the opportunity to talk to students. It is always a thrill to see young minds that are open to understanding and learning, but yet bringing in that point of, hey, wait a minute, you know? So I really enjoy things like that. So, this is me, Don Hayes, certified health physicist, laser safety officer. A little bit of background, I graduated Chumsford High in '73, that's not too far away. Graduated Nuclear Power School, and a nuclear power school for the Navy. It also included an additional schooling for what's known as engineering laboratory technicians, or these are the people that are involved in the radiation safety and also reactor plant chemistry. After the Navy, I did go to University of Lowell, graduating with a bachelor's in health physics and a master's in rad sciences and protection. But lately, I've been a consultant, independent consultant. I do have a list of all of my clients, it's over 200. Unlike other consultants that have one or two clients, I'll have a client for a couple of days, and I'll move on to the next, and so on. And so I'll freely give you the list of the clients I have, which range anywhere from NASA, Harvard Medical School, not to be inconsequential, but to even residents in towns such as Lexington, Concord, when they were concerned about 60 Hz. So I did have a couple of jobs where I was employed, one was at MIT, and the other one was at BAE Systems, and they are a defense contractor. contractor. Ubiquitous disclaimer, I'm a member of many different organizations professionally and they are not speaking this evening. I am. Okay, so everything here comes from me. So, I guess the question when Peter reached out to me about looking at this particular proposed insulation, the question that I knew I would have would be, well, what are the rules and how do they, and I love using the word "they" because everyone likes to use "they" because "they" doesn't mean anything. So, for I will, for here, I will tell you that that means the Federal Communications Commission, the Occupational Safety and Health Administration, or OSHA, and also the Massachusetts Department of Public Health. They are the ones that expect the site to comply. We really can't rely upon the OSHA rules because they admit they are outdated. They have a straight one number limit, which is 10 milliwatt per centimeter squared. You can compare that versus the limit for public at the, for example, FM frequency, it would be 0.2 milliwatt per centimeter squared. And so, the FCC limits are much more modernized than the OSHA limits. But then, more importantly, Massachusetts has limits in 105 CMR 122. And you should note that if you go and look at the actual numbers, they are the same as the numbers have, or numbers listed in the FCC regulations. It's important to understand that there's two different types of exposures standards. One is the exposure to humans and the second one is what we call emission standards. Emission standards are things such as microwave ovens and the phones, the tablets and so on, your automobile, that emits RF signals. And there's a limit on what they are allowed to emit based upon certain criteria, whether it be from possibility of harm to the device itself or other devices or to harm to humans. And so, if you look at the last line there, the emission limits are different than the exposure limits. So, for example, the Food and Drug Administration has a limit on what the human is allowed to be exposed to from the phone itself to 1.6 watts per kilogram. Okay, that's not any different than any other watts per kilogram. That's a watt per kilogram. And compare that 1.6 versus the whole body worker limit of 0.4. Those are for workers that are trained in RF exposure. But for members of the public, the limit is 0.08 watts per kilogram. Now, that number, 0.08 watts per kilogram, is the same number whether it be through the FCC or Mass Department of Public Health or OSHA or anything else. It's, that is the number that's agreed upon that's safe for 24 hours a day, seven-day-week public exposure. Now, one of the things that I will point out that OSHA does specify, and the highlighting here is my benefit, in 1910 268, sub-paragraph P, item three, it talks about what the employer needs to get into to make sure that their employees are not overexposed. And the text I have written in blue outlines what that basically means. In other words, a written RF safety program, that is a program that designates how you are to operate your sources. Engineering controls such as barriers and positive access control. You have to make sure that no one can get access to the antenna, not the pole, but the antenna where the emissions come out of. And then, OSHA does dictate how workers have to wear personal protective equipment. OSHA does have a ruling for the sign. It's in the upper right-hand corner. That sign, even though it's in the federal law, it is no longer accepted and OSHA is now accepting the C95 dot two warning signs, which are the ones on the lower right. The FCC rules are located in Title 47 of the Code of Federal Regulations. These were written in 1996 and you can't expect people to go back and change from 1996. They are there, just like the words from the Telecommunications Act of 1938. Those words are there. Or the, the words in the cable TV app. Oh, I don't have to keep pushing it? Now you tell me? Hi, yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm sorry. I digress. So, anyway, you can, these aren't hidden. You can look at these yourself. I gave you the link up here. The, the exposure rules, it's important to understand that the numbers in the tables are not the exposure limits. The exposure limits are 0.08 watts per kilogram public, 0.4 watts per kilogram worker. Those are the limits. The numbers in the table are the numbers that tell you the corresponding field value that under worst-case conditions are going to result in that energy absorption. So, unless physics changes, unless people's size changes, those numbers aren't going to change because 100 milliwatt per centimeter squared at six gigahertz is going to cause 0.08 watts per centimeter squared under worst-case conditions. We can't, we can't change that. In other words, there's no reason to make them lower because the limit's still 0.08 watts per kilogram. And if you go into OET 65, the Office of Engineering and Technology from the FCC, these are what the numbers look like. Now, I will be brief and I'm not going to read slides 12 through 26 to you. I have them printed out here. You have a copy there. These are highlights of the FCC memorandum and order that goes all the way up from 2013 to 2020, which talks about how they are enforcing their rules. And so, if you don't mind, I, I'm going to go through all that. You can read that on your own. I don't want to insult you by reading it to you. I do want to show you something. This is an actual communication tower in Quincy, Mass, that I have been performing annual measurements on since 1994. So, we're talking 30 years of annual measurements. And what I did for here is not only plot all the measurements, but I plotted where they are relative to distance. That red dotted line is that 500-meter line that would be suggested by the New Hampshire Commission, which I disagree with because I don't feel there's any difference between the exposures within 500 meters and outside 500 meters, if in fact, you're concerned about the exposure. You'll also notice all the exposures are well below the allowable limit, well, well, well below. Now, one thing I will point out is there an, there is an errant dot from 2003. You could see it sticking up, that blue one, all by itself. And it's interesting about that dot because while I was making my 30-minute measurement, a car drove by me that had side-mounted K-band radar that illuminated me and I know that because my radar detector went off. So, even though that wasn't from the tower, I felt compelled to include that and that's what drove the number up to 10% was because of that car. Here is a plot. I went through the C-squared report. I went through and I plotted where the Verizon numbers would be based on the C-squared calculations, which I agree with. As you can see there in the bottom, by the way, this is a logarithmic scale. And so, the limits are red for FCC and yellow for Department of Public Health. And as you can see, they are exactly the same and so it shows up yellow and red. There was some question about the ICR numbers from the table. I included those up above and you'll see that those are actually higher. And so, we don't need to go with the International Commission on Ionizing Radiation Protection. We can go with Mass and, and the FCC. Now, I, I redid this graph by getting rid of the logarithmic scale and I put on a linear scale. And as you can see, that we are far, far, far below the allowable limits. And by the way, this is for continuous exposure, 24/7. It's not based on any intermittency. All I can say is that you need to appreciate the situation that you're in with that type of tower. And if you look at the way cell towers are put up all over the country, you can get pretty close to these antennas on a daily basis. And obviously, the people that work in that DEM tower have no problem being in there 24 or however long they're up there. Thank you very much. That ends my presentation. I'll happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. Appreciate that. Okay, so, what we're going to try and do here is go first, one question per committee member each, and then if we've got time, we'll come back to second questions from committee members. And I'm going to use this time not just for questions for our expert, but any other questions that we have that could be directed towards Peter or Sherry. Once we go through some questions, then we can have some deliberation and potentially have a vote. That being said, who has a question? Yeah. Vikram?
Hi, thank you very much for the presentation there. Actually, I have sort of a number of questions, but...
You get one. I was clear.
I know. I realize.
We'll start with one.
What is like the most heard one? I, I think, so, one thing I have concerns about are that, you know, there's a spectrum of things you get broadcast, right, typically. But now, we're seeing more broadcasts at sort of more like 5G and a higher range. And my question is, from my understanding is that when children are exposed to these things, they're sort of more susceptible and, and constant exposure can in fact build up over time. So, given that, the proximity, can you allay my fears regarding that?
I, I don't know if I can allay anybody's fears based upon just my good looks and my demeanor. What, what I can say is that a lot of misinformation is out there. One of the things is that this so-called 5G or fifth generation is, is solely used at a particular frequency. And, and even though that might have been the plan in 2016, 2018, when it was thought of, and even in 2020, when they thought about implementing it, the reality is 5G is not just millimeter wave. As a matter of fact, millimeter wave is failing as far as carrying 5G because it's just, there's just so much loss in the atmosphere at that higher frequency. And so, right now, i-if you were to get 5G from one provider, the frequency is actually lower than the frequency initially used by Cellular One and Bell Atlantic 9X Mobile, which started cellular back in the nineties. And so, to, to be concerned more now about the millimeter wave that has a limit that is five times higher than the limit for AM broadcasting and the fact that AM broadcasting has been around for almost 100 years, I, I, I would say I would not be concerned at all about the different G number. The different G number is just the latency. It's the, it's the band rate of data. It's got nothing to do with power or frequency. And so, I personally am not concerned about whether somebody is using UHF, VHF, millimeter wave, microwave, RF, low frequency, because I know the entire spectrum has limits for exposure. And so, as far as I'm concerned, as long as you're below the limits, and it's a threshold effect, as long as you're below the limits, you're fine. So, in other words, you're, and by the way, you're no safer at 75% than you are at 95%. And you're no safer at 5% than you are at 75%. It's, it's not like that.
What about a constant buildup?
Vikram.
That part wasn't addressed.
I did. I said it's a threshold effect. So, unless you're reaching a threshold, it's not going to build up over time.
Thank you. More questions. Andrew?
Thank you again for coming today. I really appreciate it. I was at the session this afternoon and I found the discussion around emissions from the phone and exposure to the signal from the town, from the cell tower really interesting, specifically with regard to signal strength and proximity. I was wondering if you could talk about that a little bit, how the, really, if you just talk about the way that a phone would react with emissions the further or closer to a cell phone, cell tower.
Excuse me. So, what the gentleman is talking about here is that the, this is a Verizon phone. I'm sorry. There was only two available at the time, Cellular One and Bell Atlantic. And Bell Atlantic was B and Cellular was C. And so, I got B. And I've had it for over 30 years. There's no reason to change. The thing about, so, when cell phones first came out, they were basically the 10-watt bag phone. You know, everybody, anybody that's watched the movie Lethal Weapon and you see Danny Glover up on the overhead, he's got the bag phone. That's what we had. The heaviest thing was the battery and you had to have 10 watts to get to the tower because the tower was a long, it might have only one city, long ways away. The problem is that you can't put 10 watts up near your head. You're going to overexpose your head. Okay? And as a safety person, you just can't do that. I don't care how much you want that call to get there. You can't do that. And so, the weakest link for either, whether it's a two-way radio or a two-way cellphone, is the phone has got to go back to the tower so the tower can send it to the recipient. Remember, the, the tower is not the recipient, right? It, it's another person. So, the tower is just the step-through. And so, when these phones first started coming out, they had one power on. Okay? Well, people complained because batteries lasted two hours. Well, it's, that's how long it can last, two hours. So, then they started to adjust the power so the battery lasts longer, but yet the battery was, or the power wasn't high enough to reach the distant towers. People were complaining, I'm dropping my calls. I'm not, I'm only getting one bar. I'm getting no bars or whatever. And so, the modern cellphone is, has two power levels, basically regular and oomph-a-oomph-a. Okay? Oomph-a-oomph-a or high power, that's the one that's going to get you the furthest away. And so, as a user, your job is to make sure the phone battery lasts as long as you can, right? Isn't that what you do with your phone? Make the battery last? Because you know that if you get far away from a tower, the phone's going to really start to get hot, right? And your signal's not going to get through. Why? Well, it's because you can reach the tower, but the tower can't reach you. And so, as counterintuitive as it is, the closer you are to the tower, the lower the power is on the cellphone, which means the lower the exposure for the user. Now, think about this. Your phone, you can look up your SAR data. You know that, right? FCC website. You can, it's in the owner's manual. It tells you what percent you are. Typically, 75% SAR. That's 75% limit. That 75% is 20 times higher than 75% from the base station and it's nowhere near 75%. It's less than 15% or 16%, as those numbers don't matter, right? So, in other words, you're going to get a lot more energy from your phone than you are... So in other words, you're going to get a lot more energy from your phone than you are from the base station. That's the bottom line. That's a fact. It's 10 years of data now that indicates that. So the reality is, if you want to lower exposure on a daily basis, you have to have more towers. And I'm sorry, that's the way it is, but that's just physics.
Thank you.
Hi. I wanted to thank you for, I think, what seemed to me to be a very transparent presentation, putting in data that you know to be an outlier, putting in links to things that, you know, people might have questions about, just putting it all out there. I really appreciate that. And I was wondering if you could kind of put into context for us, and not to insult you, but you've been here for a while, you've been researching this for a while, so you have a lot of experience. Is this any different than the sort of fears around microwave ovens or when cell phones first came out? Is this sort of part and parcel of that story that we see time and again of new technology being a little scary?
It's funny you mentioned microwave oven because it always bothered me that the microwave oven at DuPont or New England Nuclear, when I worked there, it says caution microwave oven users, or no, caution pacemaker wears microwave oven in use. Okay, well, you're not putting your pacemaker in the oven, right? And so it really bothered me, how did that come about? And so the reality is, I found the person, his name is Chuck Hicks, I found the person in the United States Army, he was an industrial hygienist. And his theory was that if the doctor resets the pacemaker with a little microwave encoder, then maybe the microwave oven could reset the pacemaker. So they've got to be careful. Now, I think that's kind of a stretch. I don't think those numbers need to be there. And by the way, your microwave oven is allowed to leak at 5 milliwatt per centimeter squared, where the FCC limit at the same frequency, 2450 megahertz, is 1 milliwatt per centimeter squared. So the allowable energy from the cell tower at millimeter wave is five times higher from your microwave oven. And that's FDA, that's not FCC. I hope that answered your question.
Thank you. Other questions from the committee? Jenny.
I have to apologize because I was not here for the meeting on August 22nd, although I did watch it. But, you know, with all of the information that we've had to review, I am struggling to understand what other options have been investigated and rejected. And just want to state that the overwhelming majority of comments that we received are about the Boardwalk campus, which has nothing to do with this proposal, and this proposal wouldn't help as far as I understand it. And I just, I feel like I need to go five steps back in this process to understand what the scope of the problem is, what the potential solutions are, what has been investigated and rejected before we even get to where we are right now, which is, you know, allowing a lease with, you know, a very lucrative business that I'm not even sure is going to solve the problem that we have, that we then can't get out of without knowing for sure that it's safe when there are so many members of our community who are very, very uncomfortable with this. So I don't even know if that's a question for you or for you, but I completely adrift in not even attending to the nitty-gritty here because of the background questions that I have. Thank you.
Sure. So Ginny, I think, actually Brendan, you've been working on this for the better part of several years, trying to figure out how to get cell service to improve in the area. One of the challenges that led us to think of this in the first place is that we're having a unique challenge that, you know, when we lose power and Wi-Fi access in our schools, we are also losing the ability to communicate during emergencies and other urgent situations. So I gave the example last time that, you know, during like the last storm, I'm outside wandering around trying to find a cell signal so that we can tell families what's happening and things like that. You know, we have a need to be able to coordinate things. We have radios in the district, but there's also times where we have to get a message out quickly beyond just what a radio, hand radio can do. So, you know, Brendan has worked on this for a number of years, trying to figure out how to improve cell service. We actually installed a repeater in my office that was hooked up to the network just to try and boost signal. It doesn't do anything. But Brendan, do you have any background information?
Sure. So in regards to Boardwalk, I think we don't have an answer in terms of whether this tower will definitively improve it. Where we left it is, we're quite confident that the tower won't hurt service at Boardwalk. But we had asked Verizon, there's sort of an interesting relationship. When we started working, we were working exclusively with Verizon directly because considering that's the carrier the school district uses. Tower Co. is more recently in the equation, and they're the company that Verizon has contracted with primarily to construct the tower. So there's sort of two entities, right? There's Verizon and the coverage they provide, and then there's Tower Co. So, and Tower Co., the lease agreement is primarily a real estate lease agreement. So that said, Boardwalk Campus is where we explored the most coverage because that's the space where we immediately, even before construction was completed, learned that the coverage was, there was bad. The former Gates property was actually spotty to begin with. And if you look at the terrain, it's actually a little bit of a, down in a valley there, right? As it approaches the wetlands. So at that property, we explored three potential options, or looked into three options. One was a net extender program through Verizon. So that's a little bit, there's a lot of difficulties with it. So number one is it only improves Verizon service. They could have potentially covered some of the costs, but it involves infrastructure laid out throughout the building. The district now has to support that infrastructure. It's network dependent. And my understanding of the way this works with phones is the carriers don't like it when the signal leaves their network. I think there's cost implications to them, but it's also, they don't have a rein on the security anymore. That's the same problem that plagues Wi-Fi calling, if you're familiar with that. So Wi-Fi calling is a feature that the phones have that allow you to use whatever Wi-Fi signal you're connected to for internet access to actually complete calls. That only works when you have truly no coverage whatsoever. And when you're in the fringe zones, the phones are sort of trained to always sniff out the primary network. So it frequently fails. Here in this building, and I'll get back to that in just a second, my phone is usually flipping back and forth between Wi-Fi and, and what they call the macro network, the actual Verizon tower network. And the result is calls, I would say anecdotally, 40% of the time, I get maybe half the audio. So I get one side of the call or the other. So then the last one is the Wi-Fi calling, which I actually just sort of elaborated there. Sorry. One other option is what they call a DAS system. So it's distributed antennas. It's much like the Wi-Fi topology where there's devices throughout a building, same sort of problem. Those tend to be single carrier only, so it doesn't support anyone off whatever network we pursue with it. It's also, generally speaking, going to be our cost, which when we priced just sort of rough numbers, actually use the same company, C Squared, that Verizon worked with for this report. That came close to, I think, half a million dollars just to do that one building. The final piece is what they call BDA or bidirectional amplifier. Those sometimes are covered, the cost is covered by the carrier. But what Verizon tells us, and anecdotally, we seem to believe is also true, is here on the main campus, we definitely have issues with cellphone performance, especially during the school day. And Verizon was perhaps bold enough to admit that they've acknowledged a capacity issue. So coverage, Tower Co. went into this a little bit on their presentation back in August, but coverage is the situation where there just isn't a tower in range to, for you to have signal and service on your phone. That seems to be the case at Boardwalk, certainly once you get inside the building at Boardwalk. Capacity is enough bandwidth to handle the amount of phones in an area. So if you come here on the weekend for a game or what have you, or you're just taking a walk, performance is better than when you're here during the school day. No surprise, during the school day, we have probably a few thousand devices, many of which are Verizon, all trying to get their signal off of Great Hill. So that's a little bit of a, where we came from. Does that help?
Yeah. I would add, we also moved our administrators, who have the district cell phones, over to Verizon's first responder network, which prioritizes signal to our phones during, you know, emergencies, so that we're not competing, but it's still not getting us the signal because if there's a capacity problem, it's not solving it for us. So that's, that's some of the background on the challenge.
Good evening again. I just wanted to point out that one of the ways that, for example, Children's Hospital and Mass General Hospital solved that was to put micro cells on every floor. And so when you go into Children's Hospital, if you look up like, like your Wi-Fi right there, that's exactly what it is, except it's not Wi-Fi, it's a Verizon wireless small node. And so it's right there in Children's Hospital, right above your head, and they've got them several locations on every floor and so, but that only covers the inside of the building. And so, but again, it's only one carrier, but that would be another way.
Lakshmi.
How many of the staff members will be able to access this once we put this tower up? What percentage?
Well, initially, it's anyone with Verizon service. And then, you know, Tower Co. does, I believe, have a right to also bring in additional carriers, which could then expand for, for other cell carriers. But I know, you know, there's different cell carriers that also work on the Verizon network. I believe the Comcast phones, all the Xfinity phones work on Verizon's network. There's also some third-party cellular services that also run on Verizon's network. But, you know, quite honestly, we targeted Verizon because we are on their first responder network. And, you know, if we wanted to build something out, we believe, you know, like this was, for me, the pressing issue behind doing this was making sure that we had reasonable communications during serious incidents. And so that's why we're starting with that. I can't tell you the percentage of staff that would be on Verizon's network. I would bet it mirrors whatever percentage of the public is on Verizon's network.
Okay. Thank you.
Have you asked a question yet, Tori? Excellent. It's your turn then.
Yay. What do we know about the backup power plan for the proposed tower? So we're talking about power going out. I looked through the pack and I didn't see anything on that.
So we have Jason, and Jason, I apologize, I forgot your last name offhand.
That's fine.
From Tower Co. here to speak to that.
Hello. Jason Catalini from Tower Co. I'm a counsel and head of real estate. I've been in this business for 26 years, since Nextel. So I find this conversation very interesting, and it's actually pretty much online with everything else I've seen in school properties throughout the country. So I think you're asking all the right questions, first of all. As far as backup power...
I'm sorry. Lakshmi, Andrew, we're having trouble hearing. Thank you. Sorry, Jason.
With teachers, you'd make sure there's no conversations going on. Both my parents are teachers, by the way, just as a side note. If for backup power, Verizon will have a generator. So they'll have a backup generator diesel, so it will come on whenever power goes out. So if it's a AT&amp;T has FirstNet, Verizon, I forget their, their emergency system is, I forget the name of it, but they'll harden the site, site hardening, so they'll make sure that they have power during an event, snowstorm, you know, obviously in New England, that's common. And so if the site goes, if the power goes down, which apparently you have an issue here because I believe the power comes, you control the power on the campus. So that will allow you to communicate through the cell tower, you know, when the power goes out.
Thank you. All right. Who hasn't asked a question yet that might have one? I think I have one. Let me go back to my list of questions. I guess, I guess the one question, because I'm moving myself to one as well, is Don, can you talk about any past engagements you might have had with the cellphone industry? You know, we talked about you being an independent consultant, so can you give us a little bit of background there in terms of who you often consult with and, and sort of help us understand your independence?
Sure. So it's kind of hard to explain. It's, so I started working or consulting when I was at MIT, and they more or less encouraged it because when you, of course, accepted a, you know, a job, you want to make sure that you get it done right. And so if it's something that you're not that familiar with, you become an expert very quickly. And so my consulting has been what I consider to be on-demand only. In other words, I don't have a list of clients that I tend to. I don't have stipends or retainers or anything like that. It's, hey, Don, we've got this fish factory and we're having problems with our metal detector. Can you help us? And so I try to think of what I can do for them, and if the answer is no, the answer is no. But in this case, the answer was yes, and we solved it for them. And I had another call from a company in Western Mass. They, they said, you know, we're, we're working with a heat sealing unit and one of our workers' clothing keeps catching on fire. You know, can you help us, Don? I said, I don't know, maybe in a couple of weeks. Yeah, of course I'll come out there and help you. So it's not like, you know, Verizon is a, is a client that pays me $100,000 a year to lie for them. I wish that was the case, but it's not. It's, have I worked for Verizon? Absolutely. Have they been a good client? Yeah. Do they ask me to lie for them? No. And the reason why is they know I won't. And it's because I made a decision that I'm going to run my business in a certain way because I think I have to answer to not only people, but other things as well. We have to be good stewards of the earth, right? And so it, that's pretty much what my client is. So when NASA calls and they said, hey, we, we need someone, or for example, Harvard Medical School, the continuing education, they wanted somebody to teach a course for them. So for a couple of years, I helped them out and I taught a course, but it was on Patriots' Day. I do not want to drive into Longwood Ave on Patriots' Day every day, every year. And so I told them, no, I'm not doing that. And so it's not like I'm an indentured servant, I'm not a hired gun. I have the, a message of independence other than, I think Peter already knows how I've let him know certain things that, that he needs to know. And one of the things I was pushing is the RF safety plan. I'm sorry, but the carriers hate that. But you know what? From a health physicist, there's nothing wrong with that. And it's written and you can follow it. So that's basically the kind of consulting I do. So it's not a, but have I done meetings like this? 3,000, 4,000, 5,000, I don't know how many. Sometimes three a week. Anywhere from Denver to the Philippines. And so, and it's not just the one carrier, it's FM radio station. Last week, two weeks ago was Vermont Public Radio. They have a television and, and radio antenna, or towers up on Mount Mansfield. And every year I go up there to make sure it's safe for people to not climb the mountain they're not supposed to climb, but they do anyway because it's gorgeous up there, if you have young lakes.
Awesome. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have one more sort of process question before we go into deliberation. I think it'll help sort of the deliberative process. Assuming that the school committee signs the lease, what are the next steps? Are there other bodies in town that need to review the plan and provide additional permitting? I'll look to any of the other experts in the room that can help answer that.
Sure. Can you hear me? Okay. It's the standard process. We'll do our due diligence, we'll run environmental studies, title report, survey, construction and drawing and so forth. There are, then you have the local zoning requirements. You have to go through the town of Acton. I don't know off the top of my head what it is for this particular location. My guess is probably some form of public hearing, potentially a variance, but I don't think that that location would be a case. It's probably going to be a CUP, a special use process. So we'll do our standard due diligence, take it through zoning... use process. So we'll do our standard due diligence, take it through zoning, contract to Verizon, and, you know, build the site. The one thing I would say, in, you know, looking at the location, because you have your own power on the property, I think we put in the lease something about utilizing the power the school has. I'm not exactly sure if that would be necessary or not. And then the school has requested to put equipment on the tower as well, for, it must be two-way radio for your bus drivers. And I think the town, correct me if I'm wrong, the town has a requirement as well for public safety.
Great. Thank you. Ben, you didn't ask a question yet?
Not so much of a question, but a comment.
Well, let's move into discussion. We're there.
Okay, go for it. Knowing that we've had many emails concerning the proposed monopole tower, and because there have been concerns around the exposed radio frequency waves that would come from it, because of this, I decided to reach out to a colleague of mine at work who's been an engineer for over 30 years. He's a double E, former double E major, electrical engineer. And specifically, I had inquired whether or not there would be an increased risk due to the dangerous exposure of these RF waves. He said categorically, no, flat out. And he's been in this industry, not, you know, radio or cell phones, but public power for 30 years. He indicated that because the pole where it's situated, far back, far enough back, and the radios being high up, you know, 100 feet up in the air, that any risk of the radio waves was minimal in accordance with the FCC exposure rates, exactly what Mr. Hayes was speaking to earlier this evening. Lastly, I also want to remind folks that there is also a monopole situated near the Acton post office, near the center of town. If any of you are familiar with that location, you'll know that directly across the street from the monopole, there is a kinder care daycare center, and also a karate dojo where my son attends. If I'm, what, yeah, and Russian school mathematics, too. The point that I'm trying to make is that there already is a monopole in our town that has, as according to Verizon, it hits band number 13, which I guess is a low-level band. I'm not an engineer, so you'll have to forgive me. But the point that I'm making is that we already have a monopole in town. It's near where children are playing, especially young children. I feel safe, and I would be, or I will be, voting in favor of this tower.
Thanks, Ben. Other discussion from around the table. Andrew?
Thanks, Ben. And again, as I mentioned last time, I became an accidental expert in this as I was trying to figure out how to solve a problem of getting cellular signals for digital data into 10,000 stores around the country. A couple of things. Jenny, you asked some questions. What are the problems? What are the options? What are the options that are available to us? The general problem is there's poor connectivity. That's data, voice, text, across our main campus and all the way out to Boardwalk campus, which has the line of sight's about a mile. The options that would exist would be for us to provide Wi-Fi access for digital data and text, and that would allow for connectivity, but only for in-network devices. It's expensive. It provides, it requires multiple antennas within buildings, need for high-speed data, and only works in short areas. The microcells, femtocells that you talked about, having one on every floor, is defined for those particular cell systems, and also demands us to have multiple antennas across multiple locations with multiple ways of being able to port out to the outside antenna. We could try extenders, where you're able to effectively bring the signal from outside into buildings, but you need to have a signal for that to work in the first place. And we don't have that, because we don't have great connectivity inside this area. You could try satellite. Satellite works outside, not inside buildings. It's line of sight. So satellite, that works great in airplanes, because there's a repeater in the airplane, but it does not work inside of buildings. That leaves us to the idea of a new tower. A new tower is a passive opportunity to get into this connectivity. Everybody has it already. The new towers that are put up, the towers that are around, lifts all boats. If you have a cellphone and it works, it works because you're near a tower. Then you mentioned the monopole. Every antenna and tower in the country is registered and licensed by the FCC, which means there's a database of every antenna and tower registered by the FCC. That database happens to be searchable by a thing called antennasearch.com. And if you go to that and you plug in this address, you'll see that there are 59 towers and 90 antennas within three miles of where we sit right now. This isn't a new addition. This is plugging a hole for an area that doesn't have great service, but we're already kind of covered by this. But everything we've talked about, every question we've had has been about safety. This is a conversation about safety. But not the safety that may come from being 16% of the FCC limit. This is a safety matter that has to do with connectivity to our family and our friends and our kids when something awful happens. The ability for us to be able to get into these schools and talk to our family, talk to our kids, know what's going on, is the most important part. And this gives us a way of being able to do that. A way of being able to do that that's not under the control of the electrical system inside the building, that's not under the control of the Wi-Fi system inside the building, but is taken care of through the, over the airwaves, the radio waves that have blanketed us, all of humanity, and for the last 100 years have provided information for us by them. I'm voting for this. I think it's exceptionally important. And thanks.
Thank you. Other discussion. Tori?
A lot of what I was about to say has already been said. Thank you, Ben and Andrew. I think probably the thing that hits me the hardest is having been in a position of leadership when, shall we say, unexpected things happened. The most important capability is the ability to talk, to know what's going on out on the ground, to be able to call for extra resources if you need to, and to be able to make decisions and get that information out. And I actually read the town of Acton's hazard mitigation plan. One of the number-one hazards we're planning for is a whole bunch more storms and a threat to power, which therefore means we are at risk of not being able to talk, as things are now. I, it's just unacceptable to me that, one, this even exists as a problem right now, but, two, to think that we would not find a way to solve it. And a lot of the things that we've talked about, as Andrew pointed out, are reliant on building power. So, you know, to me, the key questions that make this a good solution to the problem we're trying to solve is it has redundant power. It has the capability to allow the people who need to get on the cell tower when they need to get on it to be able to access it. And it also allows our leadership to be able to get the information they need, make decisions, and put them out. I do appreciate the extended conversation on this. I appreciate having all of the people who've come in to talk about this, both the things that they're concerned about, the things that they know about. I actually reached out to my dad, who is a health radiation physicist, on the ionizing side. The last time we talked about physics, I was 16, and that did not go particularly well. The question I asked him, being an expert in kind of the wrong end of the spectrum to what we're looking at now, was how would you look at this problem? And he said, I would go out and take a look at what are the other standards out there. So, yes, I'm responsible for bringing the Ichnerp, and thank you for addressing that. But I thought it was really interesting to see the response at the FCC's limits, which we've been looking at and going, oh, well, those are, you know, those are out of line. They're too high that, you know, actually, and they are tighter than some very well-vetted, commonly-accepted standards. So to me, the compelling need to solve the biggest problem, and this being the solution that fits, and being comfortable with the research and the sciences that's been presented, I will be voting for this.
Thank you. Other discussion, comments? Vikram?
Yeah, I put a pause on this last time, because I felt we'd need to do more research about it. I felt like people here hadn't been, I don't know, there's some general knowledge that seemed to be lacking around this. I think we've all put our nose to the grindstone and sort of dug in ourselves to find out a lot more about this. I, myself, I looked at cancer.org and the World Health Organization. A lot of organizations that would really be screaming if there was a huge issue with this, that there was a high risk, and I really not finding anything. There's some smatterings that perhaps there's something, but it's so minimal, also given the height of the tower and the broadcast frequency from that, and the limited amount of exposure that results from that. I do have concerns. This seems to do more for Kelly's Corner than it does for the Boardwalk Cafe than for the Boardwalk School. That raises my eyebrows, I have to say. Why is it, you know, it seems like it's exactly the perfect radius for the new Kelly's Corner, but it's not doing anything for the Boardwalk. I find that really raises my eyebrows. But I definitely see a need for this, because in speaking with a lot of educators, they also, they really adamantly, they strongly want to have the cell for their service when they're working, for a number of reasons.
Thank you. All right. So we can continue to discuss. If someone would like to make a motion, we can also take a motion.
I move to accept the, what words do we need to say here? I move to go, yes.
Would you like to make a motion to approve TowerCo to construct a telecommunications facility to sublease antennas and similar attachments for communication purposes?
I move to say exactly what you just said. I couldn't have said it better.
You could just say so moved.
So moved.
I second that, whatever you just said.
All right. So we've got a motion and a second. We'll pause one more time for discussion. All right. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Any abstentions?
I'll abstain.
Okay. We have nine yeses, one no, and two abstentions.
No, that's 12.
No, that's 12. So we had eight yeses. And one of the abstentions was a Boxborough. Doing quick math here, I'm not going to be able to do the calculation exactly. The abstention was Vikram and Leela. And the no was Ginny. I can't wait until we have Diligent, and it has all of the math in it for us.
So three Boxboroughs?
Yep.
Just multiply it by 1.5.
It passes, but I cannot tell you the exact vote count that it passes by. But the motion passes. Thank you all very much. I do want to take a moment here and acknowledge the community members, and especially our students, who advocated very, very strongly against this. I really appreciate the time and energy that you put into this. Not every time do things work out in the way that you want. This time, it didn't. But please continue your advocacy. Please continue to be informed about topics that you're concerned about. Bring them to us, and bring them to other communities and other public bodies. I really appreciate that. Thank you. We're going to move on now to our personnel report. Andrew is going to give us a bit of a more in-depth personnel report. This time, we previewed this at our first meeting, and I'm going to hand it over to you now to continue.
All right. Great. Good evening, everybody. I'm giving the annual staffing report that happens in fall, usually around this time, just to provide an overview of the broader staffing changes that have taken place since the end of last school year and the beginning of this school year. I am realizing, and this is a hiccup from some of our Diligent work, that in the, in this particular section, Peter, we sort of did a, we did a slight mistake where the monthly personnel report is the document that's linked to this, as opposed to the larger annual staffing memo that was sent to you. Remember, I sent it to you and Julie in, through Diligent. So that is going to be a document that we'll just need to send to everybody, that provides you not only with kind of, the good news is that that information is pretty much summarized in this slideshow. What you won't see in the slideshow are some of the appendices that are in that report that list the names of the individuals, the staff members who have departed at the end of last year, the names of the new staff members who have joined us this year with some short biographies, things like that. So apologies for that, and we'll definitely, that's available readily, and we'll send that to you soon. In the meantime, providing you with a quick overview of some of our staffing changes for the year. We, similar to the previous few years, we have hired about 42 new certified staff members, non-administrative positions. And then we have actually 11 new administrators who we hired for this coming 24, or this current 24, 25 school year. In those leadership roles, I think you're familiar with a lot of them. Certainly, Gabby Abrams joining us as an assistant superintendent is a substantial addition. In addition to that, we have several new assistant principals, both at the elementary and at the high school level, a new athletic director, and a new director of nursing services. So again, some continued changes at all levels. We do have three interim roles this year. As you know, Mary Emmons is joining us as a part-time interim director of special education. And then at Blanchard, given former principal Dana Labs' departure at the end of last school year, Mike Votto is stepping in as interim. And then Lynn Newman, a former administrator here, is stepping in as interim assistant principal. We can, you know, within our certified staff positions, they ran the continuum of roles within our schools: classroom teachers, psychologists, counselors, a number of nurses. We had several retirements, literacy and mass specialists. So throughout K through 12, we had positions that were filled in many different areas. In addition to our certified positions, we continue to be working very hard around our support positions. I think for those who have been here with us for a few years, I think certainly post-COVID, kind of the hiring and staffing landscape in many of our support positions continue to be a bit of a moving target. That's certainly within our paraprofessional staff, our transportation staff, and our substitute teachers. Paraprofessionals, as Peter mentioned at the beginning of this meeting, we still have a number of positions that remain vacant, and we're hoping to fill. Those are special ed assistants. We have classroom assistant hours. Those tend to have the most amount of churn in terms of sort of ins and outs over the course of the school year. Certainly, classroom assistant positions, none of them are full-time, so we appreciate that for individuals who fill them. There could be movement for a variety of reasons. And the pool is simply a bit smaller than what we're used to. So that is an area that continues to be something that we're working hard to try and fill, and fill with some stability. And we're still working hard on that. And as I said, we have positions to fill. Transportation, we've had more success. We are fully staffed. We were fully staffed with our bus drivers at the beginning of this year. I think over the past few years, we've found a good rhythm in terms of options for increased hours, and certainly recruitment efforts in terms of signing bonuses, referral bonuses, quarterly attendance bonuses. I think all those things combined, along with some good management and leadership in our transportation office, has really stabilized that department. And then substitute teachers, you know, again, as I mentioned, and I think perhaps if you've read in the news, we're not alone in terms of the degree to which, again, we're also competing with just other industries for available staff. And so that is something that we continue to work hard on. I would say, just in general, it's a little bit better than in previous years. And we also have offered some incentives to stabilize that as well. And we could always use more substitute teachers. Personnel budgeting, when we present the budget, when you were all part of the budget planning last year, for positions that we know during the budget process will be needing to be filled, our placeholder is at an M6, a master step six this year, which was $74,000 and change. And this year, once we hired those 42 certified staff members, we were quite close. The average ended up being around $77,000, so slightly higher than what we had budgeted, and I feel pretty good about that. Our ability to sort of absorb that slight increase is also aided by the fact that once the budget process is completed, individuals who then choose to leave the district, their actual salaries that we had set for this year gets incorporated into what's available for us. So let's say in July, we have a veteran teacher who decides to leave Acton-Boxborough, and their salary was slated for $100,000. That $100,000 is available to us, as opposed to the $74,000 that we would have normally held as a placeholder. I think what this tells us, or at least what it tells me, is that I think as we enter next year's budget planning process, that the M6 placeholder probably was the right spot to hold it on. That was a change in previous years, where we had it at an M3, and we would consistently be struggling with maintaining and sort of balancing our choices around that. So I would say an M6 makes a lot of sense. That chart to the right just simply shows you the distribution that we had. We certainly were able to hire quality candidates who are on the beginning end of the salary scale. And then certainly, you know, we need to still be competitive and find the best candidates. And sometimes that involves paying on the higher end of the salary scale. This is going to be an area where I would predict there will be some qu... This is going to be an area where I would predict there will be some questions and conversation tonight, and I would invite that because I think this is an area that warrants and deserves some renewed attention. As you all know, I think as part of our hiring and in terms of our commitment to strong quality teaching staff, the diversity of our staff is part of that, of that effort. There have been over time, sort of both general and explicit goals around diversification of our certified staff. And I'll just say in the past two years, we've actually regressed. We made progress and then in the past two years, our percentage of staff who identify as non-white has actually gone down in percentage. Here is the chart for you, certainly certified staff. For a while, overall, we were at 6%. I think the aspiration by next year or the year after was to be 10%. And as you can tell, we're not close to that. And now we've gone down overall to 5%, where certified staff is down to almost 4%. That's an area of struggle, that's an area that there's a renewed, there continues to be sort of a stable commitment in this area, but our ability to actually meet that goal is not present. In terms of some of the things that might inspire conversation, along with some various other ideas that you might have, along with different strategies that we've tried before, we were able to, as part of our efforts last year, submit, apply for and receive DESI grant, specifically around teacher diversification. And what that grant provides is for the district to have this year about $64,000 to spend towards diversification efforts. Some of the things that they specifically have granted us money to use is for recruitment of new employees, whether that's around loan repayment, relocation costs, offering signing bonuses, as well as retention strategies. So retention bonuses or programs that may be used to create opportunities, supports, and other programs that the district would view as potentially improving the experiences of, of staff members who identify as non-white. So I think that that's an area, we have not identified how we want to specifically use it. And I think we welcome some, some thoughts and some, some wonderings by this group. I think we certainly need to talk to our ABA. Because the idea of financial incentives as a way to engage in recruitment and retention, and specifically financial incentives that is for a specified group of people, as opposed to in general, is new territory. Not only, certainly for this district, but I think for many districts, especially in a, in a setting where collective bargaining reigns. And yet, there are some districts that already were in previous iterations of this grant, have done this already. So it's, there's certainly some practice that we've, we've reached out to a few districts that have already done this and tried to see how they, how they targeted their funds. But, but we're at this place where I know Leela was part of a committee with us last year at the group. So our, Jen Faber's, Jen Faber and I, our goal is to invite Leela, invite Peter, invite some ABA members and start thinking a little bit more explicitly about how do we want to try and use some of this funding to try and see, are there certain strategies that might work? And then potentially have to incorporate that into a budget proposal for moving forward, if we think that there are certain strategies that can be effective. So from there, you know, hopefully I've given you a little bit of food for thought. If there's questions that you have, whether it's about that topic or, or just hiring in general, welcome to answer them.
Thanks, Andrew. Lakshmi.
Do we know why we are not able to hire kind of non-white certified staff?
Yeah, I, you know, I, if you ask me my opinion, I would say there's a few things at play. I would certainly say, and this is not excuse-making, the pipeline in general for diverse certified teaching staff is not particularly strong in general. In addition, the, the good news, if you can call it that, is we're not the only district in the state of Massachusetts who has a goal of trying to diversify. And so therefore, there's a lot of healthy competition. So if you're an individual who is looking for a teaching position, there's, you know, this is a good time for you. For those of us who are trying to then be on the receiving end, it's, there's a lot of competition. And that's where you get into a whole variety of things about competitive pay, location. You know, we're not exactly, you know, my, my experience has been that the closer you are to more metropolitan areas, the closer you are to Boston, whether you're Brookline or Newton or other things, you have some options more available to you than us. Not to say that this is not a lovely location, as we all know. But I think that it's just a variety of things that then play into how an individual chooses the place where they want to, they want to be. I would also say one of the things that our hope is that once you develop a critical mass of staff who can sort of demonstrate to other candidates that this is a place where there's a healthy level of diversity, sort of diversity begets more diversity. And so it's about how do we develop that first critical cohort that then empowers us and strengthens our recruitment abilities.
Thank you.
Vikram, then Yan Shin, then Becca.
Did I really see that right, that there's one black educator and zero black administrators?
You see correct.
For the entire AB school district? There's one black educator?
For certified, for certified positions, yes.
Wow.
If you enter other positions like transportation, office support staff, other support staff, then there, you would have individuals who do identify as black African-American. But within certified teaching positions and administrator positions, you are correct. Or you read correctly. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. I just have a question. So if we do think more about or around the subject of giving financial incentives to recruit candidates of color, wouldn't that make them, wouldn't that cause tension between them and staff and, or candidates in general?
That's a great question. Yeah, I mean, that's where I would invite, that's what I was saying, this is sort of new frontier where, you know, in a, in an industry that is sort of characterized by sort of collective bargaining and consistency of compensation, to create some additional elements that apply to a specific category is new for us. And I'd want to think, not only would I want it to be effective, but then we'd have to think about the unintended outcomes of that as well.
Right, thanks. I just, can I say? Okay. I just want to say, like, you know, depending on the political terrain of any area, certain groups of people will already feel their targets on their backs. Let's throw one more complication on top of that, may not be the best idea.
To jump off of what Yan Shin was saying, who bears the responsibility of making sure that people don't feel targeted and do feel supported? And that's my biggest concern is, yes, I think throwing money at it could solve the problem, sure. But maybe the problem is more that people largely, I think around the whole country, maybe are feeling a pulling back on all these DEI initiatives that we had a lot of energy towards four years ago. Where are they sort of going? I do think that we as a district are putting a lot of effort into it. But I'm looking at the principals. All of the elementary principals in that picture are white. And I wonder, as a educator of color, maybe it would be a better draw to be focusing on leadership and saying, the first face you see when you walk in the door is somebody that can maybe understand you and support you in a way that a white person might not be able to.
Andrew, I really liked what you said about critical mass. And I'm wondering if we have a sense of like, how big we think that might need to be? And if that might also shape how we look at, where does that money go and how do we use it?
Yeah, that's, that's a, that's a great question. I think certainly, that's a great question. And, you know, I think, I think critical mass overall, just an aggregate amount probably is important. But I would also acknowledge Rebecca's point, it's also sort of positioning, right? Sort of leadership positions. Am I going to a place where I feel like those who have some lever and some direct involvement in my work experience may, may walk the world in a way that they may, I feel a greater confidence that they may somehow share a certain understanding of, of the world. So, you know, I appreciate that as well. My, my own sense is, it's not, there isn't one single lever that you push on really hard. It's multiple levers that you push on all at the same time. You know, positioning of, of leaders who, who can be viewed as either similar experiences or, or working hard to show, I may not have the same experience, but I want to convince you that I can be viewed as a sincere and authentic ally in, in that work. And at the same time, I do think the, the financial piece is important in that I think it would also be a mistake to assume that we want to, that it's, that, that teachers of color are all sort of, their motivation for finding jobs is because they want to be pioneers in areas that are, that are hard and difficult and they want to blaze trails, where it's like, I want to make just as much money as the next person. Or, or I need to figure out compensation that allows me to do the other things. So, so the idea of maximizing compensation and the, and the fact that that might be just as important in their calculus as anybody else, I think is significant. And, you know, from a housing perspective and, and around here, housing is not exactly available and affordable either. So there's a lot of different, a lot of different variables.
I have a question on another topic. And you talked about the, the three areas around paraprofessionals, transportation and substitutes. And it struck me that we have annually, perennially, this challenge around getting substitutes. I wonder, can you give us a bit of perspective? How many substitutes do we have, A, on our roster and B, who are in our buildings each day? Like, I, for me, the perspective is, A, you know, my teacher was out today, we had a sub and that happens every once in a while. But when we look at overall, how many subs do we have in a building in a day? And how many do you need to keep?
Yeah, in our, in our core of subs, I, I wouldn't want to give you a number, that would be wildly off, but I can easily get that for you tomorrow and send it to everybody. I would certainly say, you know, on a daily basis, in terms of classroom subs, yeah, it varies wildly. Like, on, on the toughest days, on, you know, in May, on a Friday, we could have, you know, 100 vacancies, 100 openings that need to be filled one way or another. And one of the ways that we do fill it at the junior high and high schools, if we do not have enough external subs, is that we do invite and ask staff in the building to take on a period during their prep period in which they would be compensated for it. So that is, that's one way that if your child is at the junior high and high school, they may have an external sub, or they may have someone else who's a teacher already there who's coming in for a period. Certainly at the elementary, it doesn't work that way. But certainly at the elementary schools, if there are assistants who aren't scheduled for that day, they may serve as a sub. So we do have sort of a cohort of people who, who would view themselves as substitute teachers. And in addition to that, it's complemented by all those individuals. But yeah, you know, I do worry at times about days where if you are a student at the junior high and high school and, and out of five of your classes, you have two or three substitute teachers. That's, that's happened before and I think that's an area, separate from the substitute piece, I just think in terms of, and this is a statewide, national piece, I think just figuring out how to support teachers in, in maximizing our attendance, I think continues to be an area that we have to work, to work in tandem and collaboration with the ABA on figuring out how to best achieve that goal as well.
Thanks. Leela.
Yeah, I appreciate the staffing report. And I've had my eye on some of the special ed vacancies for a little bit. And the other pieces around, when we were in the teacher diversification kind of learning space, I was struck by how much research there is around how diverse educators are not only good just because, for all the reasons that we know, but also have been proven to be good for academic outcomes and students feeling safe. And so in particular, I'm thinking about how we have, A, persistent inequities in kind of access to education and how well students are doing in classes. And then B, around our chronic absenteeism work and knowing that it might support having diverse staff to get kiddos in schools that, that are also diverse themselves. And so no question necessarily, but in my mind, these are connected and it's not going to be the thing that solves all of our problems. But I wonder, as we're planning around these other two pieces, how this teacher diversification piece is integrated?
Thanks, Andrew.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. 8:45, we're finally on to our new business, only an hour behind what the agenda said. I apologize. I strive to do better. The item that we have in front of us is to vote to approve the change of the members of the other post-employment benefits. Members, yes, I said that. The memo had everybody except for the Boxborough Finance position. So I would entertain a motion to approve Sherri Matthews, Jason Cole, John Connor from Boxborough Finance Committee and myself to the FY25 OPEB reps.
Second.
So that was Leela making the motion and Tori seconded. Thank you, all those in favor. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Unanimous. Thank you. Onto our ongoing business. Look at that now, we're only 30 minutes behind schedule, according to the agenda. FY25 budget update. Sherri, I think you've got a quick update for us.
I just wanted you to feel good at this point of the meeting, so I purposely planned 30 minutes for an OPEB vote.
That won't happen once we're on diligent. But do we have a bu, a budget health insurance update?
Yes, we have a quick update. The Health Insurance Trust met this morning and currently the Health Insurance Trust has $575,149 cash on hand. We paid the July claims in August. Our bills have come in at approximately $136,000, which almost $106,077.5% is the responsibility of the district. We're just waiting to hear back from Blue Cross Blue Shield on something before we pay out those bills. And for the district's general fund, we still, out of the $2.191 million that we had, that we budgeted, we still have the $1,047,000. But if we do pay the 106, we'll have a balance of 941. Our balance still looks good. We still don't have to go to OPEB or E and D. I think we're going to be fine for this year.
Thanks, Sherri. Any questions on Health Insurance Trust? No. All right, next item on ongoing business is the School Resource Officer Memorandum of Understanding. This is our second read. The first read was, was the first read really August 22nd? It was at our first meeting. So we've had a month to get some feedback on this. I know that there was some feedback. Peter, do you want to talk a little bit about some of the comments that you got from the committee and where those have landed for us?
Yeah, I think one question we had that I forwarded to the chief of police was a request that the SROs themselves come on an annual basis to present with whatever supervisors are also presenting information. And the answer was absolutely yes, that's not a problem. We posted, another piece of feedback that was requested was to post some of the data around the surveys that we did with the community on the SRO subcommittee webpage. I have mixed feedback on that. One was, we did put up the summary slides that one of our members of the task force created. I went to post the rest of the data. And one of the challenges I'm having is, we asked so many detailed, like yes or no kind of questions or identifying types of questions, that it created a spreadsheet that has a burdensome amount of columns that, you know, even on an 11 by 17 PDF, it would be, I think, unreadable. And so I'm struggling with how to post that. I really don't want to post the Excel file of that for people to download because then when you start drilling into identifiable information, I do start to get concerned that people could start to want to try and figure out who the respondents are. So I kind of stalled on that. You know, if there's any good ideas about how to post that, I'm certainly open to feedback about that. But we did try for a while on that, to get it in a format that would make sense, but we just didn't get there. Trying to think of some of the other questions that came forward. I think those were probably the most significant ones that I can remember from the last meeting. Does anyone remember that you had forwarded a question that I'm not getting to?
Doesn't look like it. Yeah. So if we take a step into the Wayback Machine, we had a subcommittee that went and made recommendations. This body voted those recommendations and authorized the superintendent to go negotiate with the chief of police. Superintendent went and did that for a while, came back to us with the renegotiated MOU, of which we saw an annotated version of that indicating where the areas were and how they tied to the recommendations that we made. We had one additional round of feedback. And for the past year and a half now, we've been non-compliant with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education's requirement to have this MOU in place. So I'm going to open up for any discussion that we may have, but we would like- but we would like to take a vote on this this evening. So any discussion? And if there's no discussion, I'd also take a motion. Becca?
I would like to start with a correction. I think this was discussed on the September fifth meeting, because I was not here for that one, and I definitely did not participate in the first round of discussions for this. And then I want to clarify, Peter, your comments about the annual review, because in the final MOU linked here, it doesn't say anything about the chief or the SRO coming before the school committee. It just says that they're going to be meeting annually with you.
I thought it did have something. Let me find it. Because I thought that was the genesis of the question of having them come.
Yeah, the only thing I read was that the chief, the superintendent, shall annually review the performance, and a copy shall be supplied to each attendee. And then...
There is on, what page number is this? I'm looking at the page sixteen.
Much further down?
Page sixteen, the third bullet from the top. The SRO program shall report to the school committee of the district on an annual basis by June thirtieth.
Yep, thank you.
And then there's a list of items there.
Okay.
Yeah, you're, you're right, Becca. It was the fifth. And one of the nice things about what was in the packet for the fifth was, like, Peter did annotate what our recommendations were and highlighted in red where the changes were based on that. So it, it, it was messy, I would say, because there were a lot of recommendations. Some of those recommendations actually already existed in the, the standard MOU, but we wanted to go through and make sure that we could call out all of those recommendations. Other comments?
I had some thoughts, and it's possible that they're answered down in here as well. That the choice of an SRO and training, both language sounded vague, to leave them an out if they don't choose to comply with our desires. The training language was, you know, within a reasonable effort to attend certain trainings, and the choice of an SRO would be at the chief's discretion, but that you, as superintendent, could ask for a certain person.
Yeah, so what I did is I actually went through the recommendations from the school committee packet of last December. And the, the recommendations around training was the identical language to what was already included in the MOU, with the exception that we required twenty hours instead of twelve hours. But there were no additional changes that were voted by the school committee to what I saw in the MOU. And so as we went into this, I took it as my role to reflect exactly what, try, to the best of my ability to reflect what the school committee voted, as opposed to amending it myself along the way. So, you know, what you saw in that regard was because that was what the Subcommittee had put forward. The, and I apologize, I have too many tabs open, and I was looking for the, the various recommendations. In terms of selection of SROs, there wasn't any recommendation around that that was moved forward by the committee, so I didn't touch that in the language of the MOU.
I think some of my thoughts are just sort of generally around trying to make this as tight as possible, which is my sort of memory of the discussion. And so it's possible that that's not something that we can negotiate with the chief, but leaving sort of any vagaries or open-ended desires like that, I feel leaves them quite a large opening to just not do what we're asking. I also take issue with the language about how SROs will be invited into school buildings. It seems way too broad, and that we are actually hoping for more interactions between the SROs and students. And my personal feeling, and I thought a large part of our discussion centered around not doing that.
Yeah. No, I understand that, and that was something we discussed at the last meeting, and I tried to be transparent about, that, you know, the, what, the, the process I used was to take the recommendations as the school committee voted them, and then had to understand that there was a negotiation process that had to happen with the town. You know, certainly I can represent one side of that negotiation, but there's another side of the negotiation as well. And I think that the town's perspective is that there's a significant contribution of financial resources to maintain the SRO program, and that to have an, you know, fund an SRO program that essentially is never in the schools is not a great use of resources from their perspective. And so, you know, what I presented back was kind of the negotiation that we had come to. You know, and I had talked to Adam a couple of times through that process, trying to find some common ground that I could bring to the committee. I will say it's not reflective. That's the one element that is not reflective of the original voted recommendations, but it's where I got to in the negotiation. And so, you know, my, my sense was, I can only go as far as I can, and then the, the school committee has to decide what to do with that. And I understand that it's different, and, you know, certainly recognize that. And I believe I called that out specifically at the last meeting, too.
I think I'll sum up my feelings by saying, you know, the entire process was difficult. It's a highly emotional issue. It's one that a lot of people have a lot of different opinions on. And I certainly respect the difficulty of your position, Peter, trying to be a negotiator between multiple different entities with different desires. I'd say, you know, this MOU doesn't make me feel comfortable as a parent. I'm not comfortable with police in our schools. I don't feel encouraged by what's been produced by the collaborative process with the chief at this point. And I'm disappointed to see that we're trying, and by we, I'd say, I guess, the town generally seems to be trying to find more ways to make this program worth the money that we're spending on it, instead of saying, maybe we don't need this. Maybe we should just end it.
Other comments?
Can I just say, I, I really appreciate all the time and effort and work you put into this. And as somebody who has very mixed feelings about this, I also want to acknowledge how many people in this community feel so strongly that we need to have this. And I appreciate all of the work in, in coming to a place where, you know, it's far from perfect, I think, from probably everybody's perspective, but I think it's so much better than it was. And so I'm grateful to everybody who spent so much time on this. And, and I think that it's a very, very solid middle ground for our community, and a huge improvement over where we were. Saying that, I know that probably almost nobody is happy with, with it, but, but I support it. I will vote for it.
Thank you. Other comments? Anyone want to make a motion?
I've come about the wording about the SRO versus the SRO program. According to the school committee, what is the difference between the SRO and the SRO program? Is that we'll get a piece of paper, or are those people going to appear before us?
They'll actually come and present.
That wording is unclear. And also, I, I kind of want to second Rebecca's position on this. I, I feel similarly.
Peter, I appreciate you following up on the various pieces I emailed you the next day. And I would encourage folks to go look at the survey responses that were posted from the Subcommittee. We do have a lot of folks in this community who want to keep police, and when you look at how they identify, generally, whiter folks tend to want the police. And so as we think about, like, assessing data from an equity perspective, part of it is just like not looking at the top-line numbers. So that's all I would offer. I appreciate the work you've done. I just, I'm not thrilled with the idea of police in schools, because I don't feel like it's backed by evidence. And I think we should revisit the funding model. I know as a regional district, it's tricky, and we're not exactly in a phenomenal financial spot. And it feels important to honor the folks who said that they weren't comfortable with the program continuing.
Maybe not a discussion for tonight, given that our taskmaster will probably drive us through the agenda here. But I wonder if we might maybe all think about what we would want to know a year down the road to make this better, and to start tracking that now. And maybe that's already in there, but...
With the spirit of true compromise is when no one's happy, I move to approve the MOU as presented in our packet tonight.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. I've already created a table. It's two and a half votes for actin, per actin person, and one vote per Boxborough member. All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to need a count, show of hands will be fine. One, two, three, four, five, six. So it's one, two, three, four actin, two Boxborough. Four actin, two, all those against? One, two, three, three actin, two Boxborough. Any abstentions? No abstentions. Give us a minute to tally. So it's just the actins. So it, it passes then? There were four actin yea, and three actin nay. I, I do want to do the math really quickly, though, so. Seventeen, oh. Ten, twelve-four, and ten and a half against. It's always really hard to do simple math in the meeting. Nine and a half against. All right. So that passes, twelve to nine and a half. Thank you all. I, I would echo what Tori said. Let's think now about how we want to evaluate and evolve this as we move forward. Moving on, Subcommittee and Member Reports. First one on the list is the Elementary Budget Task Force Proposed Membership Roster. I am going to announce, first of all, that I've asked Tori to step up as chair for that task force. And in doing that, thank you, Tori, do you want to very briefly talk us through what you guys have been doing over the past few weeks in getting the rest of the membership lined up for that task force?
Sure, and I'm sure Peter's going to back me up when I forget something.
Totally.
Awesome. So we identified the essential stakeholders, and Peter reached out to most of them, and I think teamed up with some of us to make sure that they're on board. And so you can see those at the top of the list. So those are the people that we feel need to be in the room as we're making these decisions. The interested stakeholders, so you may remember the survey that went out inviting people to apply. That was the fun part for me and Vikram and Yenchen. We got to read all of those responses, and they were awesome. That was one of those places where we were very frustrated. We could only pick nine. We were ready to sneak some down into the potential, and we, we got the, the head shake that, no, we've already reached out to those people randomly. So thank you to everybody who applied. It's exciting to see how many people care about this process. And I think maybe the exciting thing for us was not just seeing how many really well-qualified people applied, but the diverse group we could put together. And ultimately, that's what drove our decisions, was looking for the unique perspectives everyone was going to bring. And that doesn't necessarily mean they're going to be the people who agree with us. We just think they're going to have an interesting conversation and something to contribute. And then down at the bottom are potential stakeholders, and you can see we still have a few to-be-determiners out there. Peter has a whole list generated with some random numbers involved that took every possible person that fit into these categories and basically gave him a list of people to email and say, hey, first two or three people to respond to this email, and tell me you want to do this, you are in. We want you to be a part of this. And again, really excited about this. What little outside reading I've done on this indicates that it's actually this group that very often brings together the people who come in with very fixed opinions on how things ought to be done, because they're really great reality checks. So looking forward to seeing those to-be-determiners filled. And Peter, anything I missed?
No. So you can look, there was a memo on your table, which was the original memo I provided you. But on page three of that, you're going to see Appendix A, which was the task force composition. What I've done is I've gone ahead and added members' names as we've built that out. I think what you will see is we actively sought out, not only in developing kind of our list of essential stakeholders that we believed had to be a piece of this, but then also in identifying characteristics of applicants. We actually sought out to create a group that had a lot of different perspectives, including actively recruiting people whose perspectives may not agree with the school district's budgeting process. So, you know, we are actively seeking to invite members of the community who may be skeptical of school budgeting into this process, so that we can have a deeper outcome. Not only do we have some membership there on the task force, but we actually also have a focus group that New Solutions K-12 is running, specifically for individuals who are skeptical of the school budget. Because I think we're actually stronger through our process if we better understand why people had concerns. So that is kind of a summary of what we're doing. You will see there are about four positions left that I'm still waiting to hear back from. I am hoping to find a Gates educator, because that, and a Blanchard educator, I'm working on that now, actual staff members at the school, because, and, and those would be ABEA members that we're, we're seeking for that, because we want to make sure that that school's teacher voice is represented in this process. I think one of the things that we're focusing on is balancing the needs of our students, our educators, and our community, and taxpayers. So, you know, we need to make sure that the task force is well-compromised of those. So I'm, I'm still looking for Blanchard. I do have a couple of volunteers who kind of volunteered and said, the times are tough, but if you need me, I'll do it. So now I'm working to circle back. I'm still waiting to find out if I can find a Gates educator to do it. We're still waiting for one more staff member who's a non-teacher. And I'm looking for one more that could be anywhere in the district. And I have one more parent slot available. So, you know, I was going to go back to that, you know, maybe tomorrow, send another round of emails, and then if not, circle back with Yankin, Vikram, Tori, and I would propose maybe going to the list of applicants, because we had a lot of qualified applicants, and maybe we fill out that pool from someone who applied, and maybe we weren't able to select initially, and that would seem like a logical solution. So, you know, potentially the motion that I would ask for would be to approve the task force composition and membership as presented, and grant, you know, Tori, Yankin, and Vikram the authority to fill out the membership roster without needing to come back to a full vote of the school committee.
Would anybody like to make that motion?
I'd like to make the motion of what Peter just said.
So moved.
Second.
So Ben, Ben motioned, made the motion, and Vikram seconded it. I'll pause just really quickly, because Peter had teed it up so well for the motion. Is there any discussion now that we have a motion and a second? Vikram?
Two sort of personal things. My name's backwards on there. My first and last name are mixed up. And second thing, I'm actually at the Gates picnic bar night, so I could maybe put out the word.
Great.
I, I just have a comment. I do want to disclose that one of the administrators in the Essential Holders and one of the teachers from the Intercessive State Holders, I believe they're sisters.
Thank you. Any other discussion? There's a motion on the floor. It's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes unanimously. Thank you. Tori, I'm going to keep you on the hot seat. Before we run the policy Subcommittee, I know you've got an update for us on, what's that one? Actin Leadership Group. It's getting late.
So ALG met at seven... So ALG met at 7:30 in the morning on September 4th at Acton's Town Hall and on Zoom. Points of discussion included the ALG charter and ground rules and updates on closing out fiscal year '24 and planning for fiscal year '25. Of note, the Select Board has indicated interest in pursuing an excluded debt project for a public works building. Members asked for a more definite declaration of intent and the cost of the project to be discussed at the next meeting, which will be October 9th at 7:30 a.m. in Acton Town Hall and on Zoom. If the Select Board indicates intent to proceed in that direction, there are some questions that we wanna bring to the budget sub. Specifically, what might a Boxborough override mean for our process and bottom line? What might an Acton town debt exclusion mean for our process and bottom line? And what might the combination of the two mean for our process and bottom line?
Thanks, Tori. And I will say to the Boxborough liaisons from Finance Committee and Select Board, if they're listening now, we should probably get together and have a chat and understand where Boxborough's planning is for this year. Thank you. Policy Subcommittee update.
All right, the Policy Subcommittee met on Friday, September 13th at 7:30 a.m. via Zoom. We discussed the goals for the Subcommittee for the coming year as we're optimistic that we can accomplish quite a bit. Topics which are being planned for are the climate resolution put forth last year by the Resource Force, creation of an AI policy for the district, and maintenance of policies already in place which require review for one or more reasons. Our next meeting is scheduled for Friday, September 27th, 2024, at 7:30 a.m. via Zoom, and we plan to begin tackling some of the policies requiring the maintenance review.
Thank you. I'm gonna keep you on the hot seat, Liz, and could you give us your liaison report from Boxborough Finance Committee?
Absolutely. So the Boxborough Finance Committee met on Tuesday, September 17th in the Grain Room of Boxborough Town Hall. At this meeting, they sort of did a little bit of a wrap-up and reviewed their investment portfolio. And something that was a little bit more material to this particular group is that at that meeting is when they agreed that John Grievan will serve as the FinCon representative for the School Committee Task Force and that John Connor will be the School Committee OPEB Trust Representative.
Thank you. I'll give the liaison report for the Boxborough Select Board. I've attended a couple of their meetings over the summer and listened in on their last meeting. I would say the biggest thing that's going on in Boxborough right now is that we're making plans for a new firehouse. So there's a owner's project manager who's been hired working the town through the process of design and development for a new firehouse. Obviously, that's material to us because there could be a big ask to the town of Boxborough to fund the firehouse along with our budget ask for next year. So we'll keep track of that. Acton Select Board Liaison, Ben, that is you.
That is me. The Select Board met on September 9th. I watched it online, where the highlights included a discussion for an entertainment and Victroler's license for Silver Girl at 251 Arlington Street. Other notable items was that there was an appointment of a new town clerk. His name is Leo Mercado. And the next meeting for the Select Board will be Monday, September 23rd.
Thank you. Acton Finance Committee, Rebecca.
All right. The Acton Finance Committee met on September 10th at 7:30 at the Town Hall, and I went in person. They spent the first part of their discussion around the creation of their own sort of task force to look at budget stuff and whether or not, you know, they had legal standing to do so and what they would call it. And they are very interested to hear how our task force comes together and sort of, you know, cross-pollinate. And then they spent time sort of going over their collective point-of-view presentation for the next town meeting, getting out ahead of all that work. And I made note that they both want to find a way to preserve the feel of the town and also find ways to stay within Prop 2.5 budgetary constraints. There was a lot of discussion about the DPW building project and future use of tax monies. And it appears that they largely are going to be opposed to the DPW project, but that's gonna be discussed more at their next meeting, which will be on the 24th at 7:30 at the Town Hall.
Thanks, Rebecca. While I've got you, can you give us a quick update on where we're at with the Joint PTO? I know we have, they haven't met yet, but we've got some thinking about our outreach to them, yeah?
Yes. So I've been emailing with Amanda Bailey, who's part of the Special Ed Advisory Group. The Joint PTO meeting, the next one, it's gonna be October 7th, which is a Monday at 7:00 p.m. on Zoom. They meet the first Monday of every month, so there's only a handful throughout the year. And they have their list of contacts ready, so I'm gonna send that out to everybody so we all know what we're doing. And it sounds like they have all their dates lined up and they sort of know what they're doing, so I'm just sort of jumping in and seeing where I can help.
Awesome. And thank you to Amanda for helping support that. Special Education Parent Advisory Council, I know they had a meeting last night, Vikram and Ginny. Did either of you attend? Any updates?
People?
Yeah, we both attended. Actually, Lilo is also there. So it was the first meeting of the year. We met yesterday, September 18th at 7 o'clock, ran for just over an hour, just sort of, you know, introducing new members of the committee. The interim director spoke and talked about some things, redistribution of parental notice of procedural safeguards, roles, administration roles, staffing. There's a new IEP form and talked about how that's gonna implement and the best way to sort of support and monitor that going in. These are topics I'll be working on. They're still searching for the Director of Special Education, and there's a new parent garden survey that they're trying to get out there. And I thought they're also quite interested in addressing the chronic absenteeism, and I thought that would dovetail with the work that we're doing. And perhaps we should kind of collaborate with them on, you know, because we're doing the same thing, so we could work hand in hand. Other than that, that's about it.
Thanks. Ginny, anything to add? And if not, you can give us a legislative update as well.
There is not a legislative update at this meeting, but I will say that the, they did spend a lot of time on the new IEP form, which obviously is a very significant change for all families. And there's lots of information on the CPAC site. You can see what it looks like. There's information about what was changed and the reasons for that. So, you know, overall, this is something that, you know, that they supported and are we're happy about, so not to be alarmed. And there's plenty of information out there for anybody who wants to go check that out.
Can you give us a preview of our guests coming at our next meeting on the 10th of October?
We will have guests from our legislative delegation, and those guests will include and be limited to Simon Cattaldo, Dan Sina, and Jamie Eldridge.
Spoken like a true lawyer. Including and limited to. Thank you. Did I miss anything? We got an update from the Health Insurance Trust. Do you have something to add, Andrew?
I do.
Great.
And I'll preface this by saying we happen to be meeting on September 19th. International Talk Like a Pirate Day.
Yar.
I have a version of the update for you, both in standard English and pirate English, and I will offer you, the chair, the opportunity for me to read either one.
Since I'm not getting any dirty looks from people around the room, pirate it is.
Arr, matey! The Acton Health Insurance Trust set sail for a meeting on September 19th, 2024, and we raised our tankards to salute our new crew member District Treasurer, Steph Krantz. The first mate, Sherry, did a grand job keeping the crew informed about the trust's treasure chest as we chart our course away from self-insurance with the trust having already set scale and scuttled on June 30th, 2024. Both the town and school committee hoisted their sails and made way for MIA effective July 1st. Our retired mates be staying aboard with Etna and retiree First ships until 12:31:24, but come 1:125, they'll be setting their compasses towards Maya's senior plan products. More tales of this voyage will be shared in the coming weeks and our next gathering, and be sure y'all, to give y'all the details. We'd be working hard to keep the town and district crew informed of any updates. Our next gathering will take place on October 10th, 2024, at 8:15 bells in the superintendent Peter Light Minimum Security Conference Room aboard the Admin Building. Arr. There you go, you matey. May the wind be always at your back.
Yoho. Can you please submit that to our secretary to be included verbatim into the minutes? With that, we'll move on to the School Committee goal update. First of all, I'll take a moment here and say that one of our goal items was that we were more engaged with our community, and as evidenced by all of the liaison and rep reports, I really appreciate the effort that you're all going through to be more engaged with the other parts of our community. That being said, I'm gonna turn it over now to Yanshun, who's gonna give you an update on where we are on all of our outreach work.
Hi, everyone. I'm gonna keep it brief. So I have sent out an email with a Google spreadsheet with all the events that we are planning on doing this year, you know, 2024, 2025. So the first coming up is Oktoberfest, which is next Saturday. Diwali Fest, Liz, thank you so much for leading it. There is the Boxborough Winter Fest, which they did not have a date yet, so stay tuned. I did ask you guys to give me your available time to participate in School Committee Office Hour. This year, we are just going to keep it simple. We're gonna do one month in Acton, one month in Boxborough. So I've updated sheet with October, November, December. I figure let's get this, get through this year, and then we'll jump in next year. Thank you for volunteer for the senior senator, Tori. I will get back to you. So I, the pressing item is actually the Oktoberfest, which is coming up really soon. It's nine days away. I have connected with Andrew and Ginny, like, and Liz, and they're either away or they have other, they're otherwise engaged. Adam and I will set up and pack up. We do need a volunteer to lead the project. I have three games that weekend and a huge assignment, so I really cannot do it. We need volunteers for the booth shifts and for someone to lead.
Can I ask a question about the leading part? Would you want that person to be there first thing?
No.
Okay.
We just do the coordination.
Okay.
Is that you volunteering or something?
I always do.
All right. So I'm gonna say this a little bit more bluntly. We need to fill up all these hours that are on this spreadsheet tonight, or we're not gonna participate. So I have volunteered to set up, and Yanshun has volunteered to take it down. Rebecca has volunteered to cover the 12:30 to 3:00 p.m. time slot and to be the project lead person. We still need someone to help with snacks and treats. We need still someone to help with decorations. You don't have to be there. Ginny's doing decorations. Look at this, we're just gonna put it all right in right now. Thank you. Who's available from 8:30 until 11:00 a.m. on Saturday to sit at the booth and talk to people?
I can do snacks and treats.
Got it.
I'd just like to say that we did this last year, and it was so much fun. And very sad to say that it is Parents Weekend at my kids' colleges, so I will be in Delaware, but it's really a lot of fun. So if anybody feels like it's weird or awkward, you know, you sit there and people come up to you, and we talk to a lot of people, it's extremely painless and very pleasant. There's snacks and games and cute kids. It's really not a heavy lift.
Andrew says the same thing. He's nodding his head. He's unavailable as well. So we need someone from 8:30 until 11:00, and we need someone from 10:30 till 1:00.
If it helps, they had really good cheese last year, and it was melty and delicious.
Oh, yes, Raclette cheese. It was delicious.
I'm out of town.
You're out of town. Liz has already volunteered for snacks, so you guys wanna work together. But at this point, we, we don't have the event covered for, for people, for bodies. So if we can't cover it, we're, we're gonna have to back out. I will email the West Acton Merchants Association and tell them that we're unavailable to participate because we don't have enough people. Not a great start to our outreach for the year. Please mark Diwali Fest, which is?
October 20th.
20th. And start filling your names in on that Google sheet, please. Additional items that need your attention as part of our outreach. Julie sent you all an email with a survey asking to input your availability to participate in the task force focus groups. Not the entire task force, but just one of the focus groups. As of 5:58 this evening, we had six out of our 11 members reply to that. One of the parts with regards to our own committee's engagement is to obviously read our emails and respond to the quick pieces of information that are asked of you. Along those same lines, Kristin Nelson, who's our amazing food services director, is looking for one school committee member to serve on the School Wellness Advisory Committee, SWAC. There are only three meetings this year, October 16th, January 22nd, and April 16th, from 3:00 till 4:00 in the evening. I'm gonna send you all an email. We need someone to volunteer for that, but I'm saying it now as well. Any other updates on community outreach?
I am at the farmer's market most Sundays if anybody wants to stop by. I have other information about ballot questions as well. And we were at the shelter, and Menchie's in Littleton has reopened, and they donated frozen yogurt, so kids were thrilled. That's it.
Awesome. Thank you. Yanshun?
Almost forgot. Tori, I think you already got started on the Ask Me list, right? Let's, like, keep it in, within five questions. And committee members, if you guys have any questions that you anticipate that will be asked in the community, then please reach out to Tori.
An update, you know, we talked a bit about our committee engagement. She's shaking her head at me. She's gonna lose it. I love it. I know. Next, our next meeting will be our first meeting on the new platform, Diligent. So your packets will be in the web portal, and we'll be running through our meeting that way. When Peter and I looked yesterday, there were still a few people who have not logged in yet.
I just sent you an email with a new request to log in if you have not for some reason. I just wanna make sure everything is smooth and you get in okay.
Maybe you're not an evening person, and you wanna do it in the morning. It'll be at the top of your inbox in the morning. Please, you need to log in. You need to register for that so that you get access to the packet because we know that we all wanna be accessing the packet in advance of the meeting so that you can have your questions ready either in advance or during that. That being said, we're gonna move on to the consent agenda, and I'll ask someone to get ready to read the warrants and recommendations. Our consent agenda item does not usually require discussion. I'm gonna read through the items, the six items that are on that. If you want anything held, please tell me. Item number one is the approval of our meeting minutes from 9:05, 2024. Item two is the annual authorization of the Junior High Student Activity Funds Clubs and Activities. Item three is the Acton Boxborough Regional PTO Proposed Budget. Item four is the Miriam Proposed, Miriam PTO Proposed Budget. Item five is the Conant Proposed Budget, PTO Budget. And item six is the Carol Hubner Early Childhood Education Parent Teachers Association Proposed Budget. Seeing that none of those were held, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Ben, and then Tori was the second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That's unanimous. Thank you. Someone wanna make a motion on the warrants?
I move that the School Committee vote to approve the below-listed warrants totaling AP vendor warrants as follows. 25-005B dated 9/5/2024 in the amount of $436,471.27. 25-006A dated 9/12/2024 in the amount of $278,861.61. Payroll vendor warrant as follows. 25-005PR dated 9/5/2024 in the amount of $560,671.24. And payroll warrant as follows. P2505 dated 9/5/2024 in the amount of $2,814,257.20.
Second.
That was Tori with the second. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Unanimous. There's a monthly student enrollment report in your FYI, and is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
That was Ben with the motion and Tori with the second. All those in favor? Aye. That's unanimous. Have a great evening. Thank you.